...meeting from Monday, October 20th, 2014, and our first order of business is to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next agenda item is your view and approval of minutes. This is from September 22nd, 2014. Did everybody review the minutes?
I read the minutes.
We'll entertain a motion relative to the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Any further comment?
I'd like to note that I'm going to abstain because I wasn't here.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Any further comment on the minutes? Any further comment? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes of September 22nd, 2014, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it and Mr. Daigle abstains. Now, Bob, since the meeting, I know you attended the site walk that we had a couple of weeks ago, and have you had an opportunity to read materials in the file?
I read the minutes and I looked at the video.
Okay, so you feel prepared to go forward and...
If there's no objections from anyone, yes.
And we'll dig into that, but you feel prepared to...
Yes.
And we appointed Richie to sit on this application at the last meeting. We don't need to do that again, do we? Because he's already there. So we have a full... subject to any objections, we have a full vote. Okay, so agenda item number three is our regular business agenda. This is an application of real estate advisor Walter Cheney. Continuation of an application for a variance referenced Section 3.03 of the New Market Zoning Ordinance for property located at 1R Grape Street, tax map U2, Lot 206, in the R3 Zone. The applicant requests a variance to permit increased residential density to allow four units on less than two acres of land on an existing non-conforming lot that does not meet the current road frontage requirements of 100 feet. This is... I think it does say it's a continuation of the application, and we had a site walk, I think the first Saturday in October, if I remember right, the fourth since then. And Mr. Cheney? Do you have any objection to Mr. Daigle sitting on this application?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. We've received a number of other written materials from the applicant that are part of the record. And hopefully, everybody's had a chance to review them. I know I have. And the public hearing remained open from the last meeting. So, Mr. Cheney, if there's anything you want to add, we have your written materials. Please don't read them to us because they're quite lengthy. But if there's anything you want to add or amplify, this is your opportunity to do it. You don't have to, but the opportunity is there, okay? Anybody else want to make any further comment, any of the abutters, people present? Care to make any further comment? This is your opportunity to do so. You don't have to, but you're welcome to. So if you would... thank you. If you would just step up and state your name and address for the record?
Wendy Chase. I'm speaking on behalf of my parents, Betty and Jake Skaglin, in 22 Beach Street. They're Director Abutters.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for all taking the site walk. That was good. Got a visual of the lot, and I appreciate that. I just... I'm going to go over what I did last time. I just don't think that the variance should be granted. It doesn't meet all the criteria of the variance test. And it wouldn't be your fault to deny this because your hands would be tied. If it doesn't meet one of the criterion, then you can't grant it. The townspeople voted in these ordinances to protect themselves from development that causes overcrowding of land, undue concentration of population, congestion in the streets. All of these things are listed in the purpose statement of zoning ordinance 303. The ordinance is designed to protect the rights of the landowners. I don't think that it meets the spirit intent of the ordinance and/or I don't think that hardship has been established. The applicant cannot demonstrate that the property is burdened by the zoning restriction in a manner that is distinct from other similarly situated properties. This duplex is all around, surrounding this property. Therefore, special conditions could not be established. The applicant must establish that there is no other reasonable use of the property that would comply with his zoning ordinance. He is allowed to develop this lot and put a home on this lot. The applicant cannot establish that the proposed use will not be contrary to the public interest or the spirit intent of the ordinance. Variance will unduly and in marked degree conflict with the ordinance such that it violates the ordinance's basic zoning objective. The right in the purpose statement says it's designed to control residential density, including lessening vehicle congestion in the streets, preventing overcrowding of land. And I think that it'll add a lot of congestion to the streets, Beech Street, Grape Street, Cedar Street. And I just don't think it passes that test. And thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. We appreciate the input. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi.
Good evening.
I'm Nathan Porter. I live at 2628 Beach Street. I just wanted to say that I am opposed to the variance for many of the same reasons. I need bifocals to read, but... I believe the current building code came about, at least in part, as a response to the type of high-density building that was occurring at the time, much of it impacting the New Village neighborhood. I understand the majority of the abutters are also opposed, and I hope their wishes carry weight with the board. I can see no compelling need to adjust the existing building code. Mr. Cheney bought the property understanding that was the code. It's not like he owned it before. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further public comment, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of the proceedings, and we're going to proceed to deliberations. And I'm met with resounding silence.
I have just a couple of quick questions.
Yes, sir.
Are we dealing with the frontage issue and the density?
The variance is based on, as I understand it, and Diane will correct me, and I'm sure she corrects me even when I'm correct. The variance application, as I understand it, is for... from the road frontage requirements being less than 100 feet, but I think it's...
It's the density requirement.
It's a combination.
And the density requirements.
It's a non-conforming lot.
Correct.
And that it doesn't have 100 feet of frontage. They're not asking to subdivide the lot. The lot will remain as is, so they're not increasing the...
So we don't... we're not voting on the frontage. We're just voting on the density?
Right, that's correct.
Yeah. The way this is written, this may be a little bit...
It's confusing.
It's increased residential density to allow four units, and the nonconformity is a failure to meet the road... but it's also nonconforming for size.
No, it's not. It meets the minimum density requirement of one acre, I believe.
What is... and that was my next question, is what is the actual acreage of the lot?
We have a plan. We have a...
This thing is less than two acres.
Yeah, less than two acres, but what is it? Is it one and three quarters? Is it...
We've got a survey plan here.
That relates to the density.
Correct.
The minimum lot size, if you can deal with...
It's a little over half an acre.
Little over.
The two lots combined. That's the...
And the minimum lot size for a lot in the R3 district is a half acre. So the lot conforms to the minimum lot size, but the lot does not conform to the residential density requirement where you can't have more than two units per acre. So in order to have four units, as he would like, he would have to have two acres of land.
No, one.
One acre, no, I'm sorry. Forgive me. Yeah, right. Is it two lots per acre?
Or a half acre.
It's two units per acre is what the density requirement is.
Right.
In order to have four units, you have to have two acres. Right.
I asked this question last meeting. Is that okay?
Yeah, and I know we discussed this, but what was the... basically, the size of the units? How many square feet were the units?
I don't remember that off the top of my head. Anybody recall that?
I don't think that was discussed.
At the site walk, we... it made mention to it, and I just didn't...
Then it was just a fourplex, but there was no actual size.
There are approximately 12 ones.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say.
Two bedrooms, three bedrooms?
I think two. That's what's proposed.
Walter, could you just elaborate a little on the thought process that... how you came up with four units being a good fit for that lot?
The reason for the four units is on how we're surrounded. And the more derf diversified the people that live there, meaning four against two, say, it could have come for a duplex, okay? The more the land is looked at as common. And if single-family, that whole area becomes my land, I don't want anybody on it. If you make it a duplex, it gets similar, okay? There's only one half and one half, okay? Make it a four-unit building, it becomes diversified. Nobody... you've got four people living there. You don't know whether the person out in your yard is the next-door neighbor, the next-door neighbor, or the next-door neighbor, okay? So nobody bothers anybody if somebody is out there walking on the land. This is a total neighborhood that is... people coming and going, meaning that some sides are rented, some people live there. It's a mix. The whole community is mixed. And if somebody takes ownership of that land and decides they're going to keep everybody off of it, it's just going to be a nightmare for everybody, the person who owns it, the police, to try to enforce it. Because you can... every time a new tenant moves in, everybody's got to come up with a new rule to explain to them what they can do and they can't do. And it just doesn't happen in reality. So that was one of the things. The other thing is, there are seven fourplexes all in the immediate area of that, okay? So... and this is the largest lot area in that whole neighborhood. So four units makes economical sense for me. It makes economical sense for the town. It's better utilizing an in-town lot. It does better for the downtown. And in the process, we get rid of two non-conforming uses, okay? We are getting rid of the garages, not physically, but we're incorporating them into the four units, okay? So, you know, it's been pretty hard to... not that you couldn't do it. You couldn't have two units and give them each a three-car garage. But it's much more realistic to divide the garages and have four units.
Thank you. Anything further, Bob? No questions. Did I cut you off, Richie? I apologize.
No, 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 no. I'm just listening right now. I'd like to hear what the other people's got to say, and then I'd like to give my opinion, if the others have an opinion.
Wayne?
I spent the day on this. Zoning Ordinance 3.03A, the purpose is to control... the control of residential density includes lessening vehicle congestion, preventing overcrowding of the land, avoiding undue concentration of population, contributing to community character and quality neighborhoods. B says, according to the dimension table, there's a maximum residential density. And C says, on the open space design, section does not permit an increase of residential density. The standards for residential density shall apply regardless of the pattern of development. It doesn't say if you have a problem with the land in that you've got not enough land and you want to... variance from that, or that you've got something on the land. It says, "The standard for residential density shall apply regardless of the pattern of development." To me, that says, just because you've got one little space in the middle of a dense area doesn't mean you have to fill it in. If it was a... suggested that this land should be for one family home. And there are lots of one-family homes just almost across the street. There's three in a row. So I don't... I don't see the hardship.
And that's why... and that's why he's here for a variance?
I went back... I thought the same way also. Then I went back to what the R3 says, the R3 district. And it says it's transition between the low-density residential and the more intensively developed districts around the New Village area. Well, this one's kind of right smack dab in the middle. So I'm having trouble wrapping my head around how this is a transition when it's basically right in the middle. It's a lot that's kind of...
Yeah.
That's what the whole area is. So I hear what Elaine says, and I'm torn between that because it's a whole mixed-use area over there. There's good examples for...
Mixed density.
Mixed density.
Mm-hmm.
If it's all residential, so it's... that lot is kind of... it just adds to the uniqueness of that lot because it's not on the periphery. It's not in a transition zone. It's right smack dab in the middle.
Yeah, and I think one of the things Mr. Cheney says in that some of the new documents that he submitted more... the documents that he submitted more recently is that there's an inconsistency with the definition of R3 district allowing greater density. And then the table of... the dimensions table restricting him in this... in the instance of this particular lot to a single residence. I just point that out. Whether you agree or disagree, that's an argument that he's making. Elaine, was there anything further?
I was just going to say, it's already dense. So adding a four unit is not going to lessen the density.
I think it was... I think it was most likely dense before the zoning ordinance came in. New Village was pretty much built out. Anything further?
Been a fair amount of infill too around the peripheries and...
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Cheney makes the point that you really can't have further development in New Village unless you tear down existing structures.
Correct.
And I think that's... I think that's right. I'm not sure that's the fault of the... that's just the reality...
Correct.
...of where the zoning ordinance is at at this point in history.
But in order to get to the densities that the ordinance allows, if you start tearing stuff down, you're actually in the process of changing the overall dynamics of that neighborhood because the density is already higher than what's permitted by the ordinance.
Right. And I think what Elaine is pointing out is, the ordinance seems designed, to a certain extent, to freeze the density where it is.
That's the spirit of the ordinance.
That's the spirit of the ordinance.
Well, the... yeah, the number is there, but when you read the, you know, what the R3 district actually is for, it's a transition, which... you know, if it were on the edge of the district or something, you know, that'd be one thing. That'd be more of a transition, but it's right smack in the middle, so I'm torn. I'm thinking.
A single-family house, there would be a transition.
There's such a mix of density in that area. There's such... and that's part of the unique character of the area. It's such a mixture of different styles and different densities.
But I don't think right there in that little triangle, triangle, whatever it is...
Yeah.
I don't think there's any single-family homes there. I think they're all duplexes.
Right, that particular block, I think it's all multifamily.
The back door and across the street, there are three.
Oh, yeah, I understand. I know the area well.
That particular block that's formed by Grape Street and B Street extension, I think, is all multi. And then the single families are across the street, and then there's some triplexes. It's pretty diverse. I want to say it's a diverse area in terms of the densities. Wayne?
I guess I'd like to take it a little bit different. I understand what everybody's saying here, but I think I'd like to point out the benefits and possibly try to address some of the abutters' concerns. I think that the benefits to allowing the four-bedroom, four units... four units, these are incidental. Some of these are incidental, but it would... what I noticed on the site walk is you have a electrical and utility mess down there that would certainly be a benefit. It would clean that up and take care of that. That's one benefit. The way it exists right now, he could possibly use as a storage area, parking. It's already grandfathered for parking and storage use. So I think that would... you know, he could... it could be used as an expanded use, which I don't think would be a benefit to the neighborhood. The... there would be an obvious, I believe, an increase in taxes paid to the town over what is paid currently. To address the abutters' concerns, I don't think that it would be an increase in traffic. The lot is currently used as a potential of six cars, I guess, and it would be increased, true, to eight cars, but I don't think that would be a real problem with traffic. The other couple of items I have is, I really believe that a four-unit fits with the neighborhood. I mean, I just heard that it's diverse, and there's single, there's duplex, but I don't think it's out of place with the neighborhood. My last... I guess my last item would be... and I know this doesn't have anything to do with the ZBA, but I think we should keep it... we should always keep it in mind. I think there's... the lot is large enough, even though it's only a half acre, to... to take care of on-site drainage. So we... I did hear that concern. There was going to be drainage concerns and whatever. So I do feel that the lot is large enough so there could be something taken... done to take care of on-site drainage. The only other thing I have is, if we send this away to the planning board, and I heard this said a few times, I think we should send a recommendation to the planning board that he... Mr. Cheney should work with abutters to screen as necessary. I did hear that concern quite a bit, and I think he was willing to do that. And I think that maybe if we sent along a recommendation to the planning board along those lines. That's it.
Thank you, Wayne. I appreciate that. What is your thought on the issue of hardship? I understand you've made a lot of good points about benefits, you know, and there's a foam pole back there where a lot of wires running off it. That's kind of a mess. We've got wires holding it. And what is your thought on the issue of hardship? Because I think hardship in spirit of the ordinance is my sense of where we're going to... is where we're getting a little bit hung up. And you don't have to answer that right now.
Yeah.
I want to get that some thought.
Yeah, thank you.
We hear from Richie.
The hardship is the area. And I don't think he can develop it for a single-family home unless he built a home with 20 rooms and rented them out. But when we looked at the site, there's four great big trees there with the wires running through them. One of them is dead. Any big storm, it could clean out all them wires, and then people that are all on Grape Street would be without power for who knows how long. I think if we granted the fourplex, it would be within our right. The master plan wants developing within walking distance of the town. And you can see that in the master plan, and it's within walking distance of the town. And I think it well meets the criteria because of the density with the other properties surrounding it. He's utilizing much less land for the building than the surrounding property. So I think he meets it. And so... but that's my opinion. I think we should approve it. And if you're getting ready, if you want to make motions, I'll make some motions.
I want to let the discussion develop a little bit more before we make a motion, if you don't mind? Because I think there's still...
Yeah.
Stuff to talk about. So you would say it's consistent, if I understand you right, Richie, it's consistent with the spirit of the ordinance because there's so many other fourplexes?
That's right. You've got, I think, probably seven duplexes around the place and a couple of fourplexes probably adjacent to the property.
Does it change your thinking at all that those fourplexes were put in place before the... not under the current zoning ordinance?
Everything was.
I understand, but I'm asking if that changes the way you think about it at all?
No.
I mean, that's... that's what makes it a neighborhood, is the similarity of uses and things like that.
Sure.
What Rich is saying is kind of where I was going with, you know, what was the thought process behind a fourplex? Just to keep it similar in neighborhoods, but, you know... was a triplex cause a hardship over a fourplex? I think that's... when we start talking about hardship, that's always the hard one to get your head around.
Yeah, and the way the issue of hardship is addressed in the law, as we know, is there's some condition of the property, some feature of the property that makes it unique relative to other properties in the district. And it's larger than the other lots generally. And Mr. Cheney says he'd be using, you know, only 30% of the land area, which is less densely utilized than other properties in the area. It's difficult, depending on how strictly you interpret the issue of condition of the property, to tie that to a fourplex necessarily. I understand it's consistent with the other areas. It just depends on how strictly you want to read the thing, I guess. How strictly you want to read the hardship criteria.
Well, it doesn't say on the purpose, A, 3.01, doesn't say the purpose. Control the residential density unless what you're going to put up there is the same as what you've already got. That's the reason that they did this, was to control the density.
Right.
So to put up what's already there.
And that's the...
That's in control of the density.
That's the issue with the spirit of the ordinance. The spirit of the ordinance is no increased density beyond what's permitted in the table of uses.
And another point, I used to be the secretary for the zoning and planning boards in Hampton Falls, and the one thing I learned from the years that I was there was that no house was ever built on any lot in Rocky Ham County whose taxes ever covered the cost of educating the children who lived in that house.
Yeah, and that's... I understand. I understand that.
But that's not something before us.
Right.
That's nothing before us.
Well, it was given as a...
They're putting 52 homes down on the golf course now. What's going to happen?
Well, we're not concerned with that one either. Well, we're, we're not considering that one either.
That doesn't come up.
But it was brought up as a reason.
Yeah, well.
As a good reason, so.
I don't think we should take that into consideration, though.
It's certainly a benefit.
It's a benefit.
To the town.
Unless you're educating the children who live there, and then it's not a benefit because the taxes will not cover the cost of educating the children who live there.
I think somebody would make the argument that 1,200 square foot building is not conducive to a, you know, it's a starter home for someone, you know, move on to something bigger, but there's.
There's a guarantee.
No, absolutely not, and I think the, the census would probably bring that into question also, but typically it's, you know, 2,100 square, 1,200 square feet's a starter home.
I mean, can someone tell me flat out their view of how, what, what is the unique condition of the property that gets you to a fourplex in, in this instance?
The uniqueness?
Yeah, what, what is, what is about this?
I think.
That gets you to a fourplex, not a variance generally with.
Okay, I'm not discussing a duplex or a triplex because what's in front of us is the fourplex.
Totally agree.
In my opinion, the applicant could go in there now, he could tear out all them trees.
Mm-hmm.
Relocate all those.
Utilities.
Utilities for a great big expense.
Mm-hmm.
And he couldn't afford to build a single-family home. That's the uniqueness. There's no way that he could build a single-family home and do all the upgrades that, that need to be done. Every one of them trees have to come out because they're in the middle of the lot. One of them's dead.
But isn't that, isn't that his risk? I mean, isn't that the risk he took when he bought the property, knowing that, knowing that the zoning ordinance says what it says? He, he had no guarantee, as far as I know, he hasn't bought a line condition that he get, that he get a variance.
Well, then, that, that's why he's here.
Right, of course.
Of course, that's why he's here.
So he might get the variance and he might not.
Yeah.
And he had to have that understanding when he purchased the property, that's where our assumption.
Well, that I don't know, because the property was for sale for quite a bit of time, and as far as I can see, they had all those abutters around there, they could have pitched in and bought it, we wouldn't be here.
Okay. Anybody else have a thought on my question? Thank you, Richie.
Well, that's what I.
That's what we're struggling with.
Well, that's what I was getting at, what's so magic about the fourplex. I mean, a duplex would be a lot more palatable to the abutters. I understand what Walter was saying, though, about duplex, the ownership issue becomes a little bit more defined, that, you know, that's, that's my spec of ground, that's my spec of ground, and it's not as conducive to what that, that lot was used for. The triplex minimizes that a little bit, but the, the fourplex is, what Walter was saying is that, you know, people are going to be rotating through there and they're going to be less likely, it, it's more conducive to a neighborhood feeling rather than mine that a single-family home would bring about.
These are going to be sold, though, right? They're going to be, it's not going to be rented, they're going to.
Condos, yes.
Once they leave Mr. Cheney's ownership, then what happens to them is really, no one really knows. There are several rental properties in the area, and there are some owned properties, owner-occupied properties in the area, I think is fair to say.
And condos do have a higher tax revenue on them than rental units typically.
Anybody else? It feels like it's kind of this side of the table and this side of the table, and I sit right in the middle, luckily for me. Let's take a look at some of the other things. Do we have any concerns other than, does anybody have any concerns other than the issue of hardship and the issue of spirit of the ordinance? Are we satisfied with the other three criteria? Can we narrow it down to that extent?
Do you have a position, Chairman?
I am not only figuratively in the middle, literally in the middle, but I'm figuratively in the middle, so I, to me, it's very helpful to have the discussion continue to develop further. If we all keep an open mind, then I think we'll get to, hopefully get to a consensus at some point. Doesn't have to be unanimous, just have to be three votes.
Yeah, yeah, all right, all right.
And I don't take it personally, and I'm sure nobody else does.
Let's just discuss the five points, then, maybe that.
Okay, let's just work through that and see, see what we get.
I don't think that granting the variance would be contrary to the public interest over there, but I think Walter has demonstrated that it could exist harmoniously with the conditions that are there. The spirit of the ordinance, however, causes me a little bit of heartburn, and.
So let's just pass that.
Okay.
Let's talk about the stuff that doesn't, is everybody okay with the public interest?
Yeah.
I, I think you guys are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't, I agree with what Bob has, has observed about that. Wayne, do you?
Granting the variance would do substantial justice, I think so. The infrastructure in that area was recently rebuilt and should be able to accommodate that, so all we've got is more users on the system distributing the, the cost of managing that, and town could recoup some of their, some of their expenses. I think that development of that lot would do substantial justice.
Okay, let's just stop there. I agree with that. Anybody disagree? Elaine disagree with that observation? You know, hold that one for a second, okay?
That's fine. Variants, we're granted the value of surrounding properties would not be diminished. I don't think it would be diminished when we talked with Walter, you know, there would be landscaping improvements, it'd be, you know, he'd do what's necessary to address the drainage, although I didn't really see any major drainages who's there that couldn't be handled. With some landscaping, the, the property would be consistent with the other areas, so I find it hard to imagine that the values would be diminished. And then we get into the.
I don't think we heard any comment along those lines from the abutters, did we? I may have forgotten, it's in the minutes, but no, I don't recall that being an overriding issue anyway.
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Obviously, number five is the hardest.
Yes, and that's why I'm just trying to get to what, to what we agree to and then.
Yeah.
Give all of us a chance to think some more.
And on the five, the owning, the zoning ordinance imposes some hardship on all property by setting lot size dimensions and allowable use, and as the R3 zone minimum, lot size is now one-half acre and the applicant had less than two acres and less than 100-foot road frontage, the applicant has shown that to remove the large trees on the lot, one of which is dead, removing the existing pole that the electric and telephone lines support, and to relocate them at no expense to the property owners that they service, and to develop this land with a single unit is unreasonable, as this lot is much larger than the budding existing lots of 2.28 acres in total of 20 units, with a density of 4,514.4 square feet per unit, and the applicant's request for a fourplex unit on the lot reflecting the area density of 29% less than the median neighborhood, the hardship has been observed.
You lost me with some of those numbers.
You want to?
Would you mind? Let me just take a peek at that. I want to make sure I'm just.
Those are, those are the actual figures.
You're saying the 2.28 acres is the total area.
Of the area around them.
In that, in that neighborhood.
And all the budding properties.
Okay.
And when, when, when he's, he's, he's looking, his, his density for the building he's putting up is much less than the density of the surrounding properties, by what, 29%?
And you're saying, so there's, in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
In that block, there's 2.28 acres with a total of 20 acres.
Yeah, and they're, they're all on, on the.
And 4,514 square feet per unit.
The density group, yeah.
Okay.
Run that by me again. Okay, I follow, I follow math now.
Okay. Thank you, Richie.
But I'm looking at the unnecessary hardship, and, and I'm looking at the no-fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance and the provisions, and the specific application of that provision to the property. And again, I come back to, you know, why was a fourplex selected? I think the, I follow the rationale for the not selecting a duplex, and, I mean, we've got a fourplex in front of us.
Yeah, and that's all we discussed.
Yeah.
Correct, I understand that, but that, that goes to this, is that.
What I hear is a lot of, having a fourplex makes a lot of sense, having a fourplex makes economic sense, having a fourplex is consistent, but I'm having a hard time connecting it.
To the ordinance.
To the ordinance, to the.
The spirit of the.
To the, to the condition of the property that gets you to a fourplex, that's why I asked that question. Sorry.
And the second part to the hardship criteria is, is that a reasonable one, definitely a reasonable one by all the logic that was there, that was presented.
Well, it's, yeah.
Well, the, the second part is the, is shown special condition to land for which a variance is sought is reasonable, as the proposed use of the land for a fourplex resident unit in the surrounding adjacent area, that there are no single-family homes, and in a marked degree will not alter the existing character of the neighborhood.
Right.
Even if he failed on the one, he would sure pass on the second.
Correct, on, on the two, and, and failing on the A section, we say, we say fails on the A section, we go to the B section.
Yeah.
If the criteria of sub-paragraph A are not established and unnecessary will be deemed to exist if only if owing to the special condition of the property that distinguishes it from other properties in the area, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the area and the variance, with the ordinance, variance is therefore necessary to enable reasonable use.
That's even harder.
That's even harder.
That's why they put in the first part A, because part B was too hard, nobody was getting variances, right?
Single-family homes, in a marked degree will not alter the.
It won't.
You know, I interpret part B to be, if you can make a use of your property within the ordinance, then you can't get a variance.
Correct.
That's how strictly that's construed.
That's what it says.
So I don't think, I don't think Mr. Cheney wants to go there. I think we're still stuck on the issue you've put your finger on, Bob. And the spirit of the ordinance, the spirit of the ordinance is not to.
Anybody out there want to join the zoning, zoning board?
Well, that's why we get paid the big money.
Yeah.
It's important, and we're having a good discussion about it.
I don't know, what she just said, it, it, the key to me, to me is, is the last line, in a marked degree will not alter the existing character of the neighborhood.
What are you reading from?
His, his notes.
On this, on the second, second part of number five.
Yeah.
Absolutely, there's no.
On the two.
Yeah.
I think that's, I said that originally, but very, I don't know.
I, I concur with that.
I think, I think a single family would be out of character.
Correct.
I, I, I do, I believe a single family would be out of character.
Well, we aren't choosing between a fourplex and a single family.
We're deciding whether, yeah, we're deciding the.
But we've got, well, we've got to sit here.
Well, in a way we are, because he's, he can put a, a single family.
If we deny him, he can't.
Yeah, that's right, so we are choosing between a single.
And, and if we deny him on a.
Other choices.
Well, if you deny him on a fourplex, he could come back in tomorrow and ask for threeplex, and.
Then he could come back and ask for a twoplex, try, twoplex.
I know, we got, that's what we got.
Large, largest size.
Correct.
That's, it makes us a great job.
Yeah.
I cert, I, I agree in terms of characteristics of the neighborhood and the consistency. I'm still stuck on the special condition. I don't.
Well.
I don't view, I don't view the, the trees as being a special condition that gets you to a fourplex.
The special condition that I see is the fact it's a non-conforming interior lot, number one, it's the, probably the last lot that can be developed down there.
Yeah, without tearing something else down, yeah.
Correct, and that is surrounded by duplexes, triplex, and fourplexes.
Mm-hmm.
So to put something in there that is not one of those three is, 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 wouldn't be consistent with the neighborhood.
But it doesn't have to be a fourplex.
No, that's what we've got to vote on.
That's what we've got to figure out.
It's the only.
How does that get you to a fourplex? We keep circling around.
My point was that it's a pork chop-shaped lot, and it has reduced frontage, and it's the only one in the entire neighborhood, so that's something that's unique, unique.
Correct, but it's.
But again, how does that lead to a four-unit complex?
I don't know. With the utility lines, I would think that would be unique, because that does come with the lot, I mean, he has, they have no control, I mean, that is a, a feature of that lot, as, as much man-made as it is, it is, it is still a feature of that lot, and it's at great expense to separate all that. I don't know, am I going anywhere with this?
I don't know that it's, it raises to, to the uniqueness of the lot.
And I don't know how it gets you to four. I mean, I, I agree that, that the power lines there, it looks like a mess, and the trees there need attention, no question about that.
The trees, I don't know, but, but the power lines really stuck out.
This power line's going through the limbs of the tree.
Right.
It's quite.
Through the dead tree.
Through the limbs of the dead tree, yeah.
But that's, that's a public service issue.
Right.
Their, their, public service owns the lines to the meter, they come down, public service has to put them back up. I mean, it doesn't, doesn't rise to, there's a lot of, there's a lot of lots that have wires clipping a, clipping a corner or something like that, and it doesn't, it doesn't.
I don't think I was so much getting at that, I think I was getting at the, the problem that it presents to developing that lot, because, I mean, I forget, I counted how many four or five that come off of that, I mean, they'd all have to be, be done to those individual homes, and that's not a, it can be done, of course it can be done,
The other thing, in terms of the spirit of the ordinance, is, you know, that there is a tension in this case between what the ordinance provides and, and what the, what the existing condition of the area is. Now, our job is to deal with the ordinance as it stands, as it's written, and not worry about whether or not it makes sense in this particular case, I guess. Well, I, I actually, I guess that's why we're here, for a variance, right? Does it make sense in this particular case? Or has the, has the applicant? Or has the, has the applicant met the burden of proving that it, that there's a hardship?
To, to the spirit of the ordinance, I, I hear what the, the butters have been saying that, you know, they're used to dealing with an empty lot over there and if it were my backyard, you know, I'd be a little concerned about what's going in there. But the fact of the matter is, I don't own the lot.
Right.
Mr. Shinie owns the lot.
Yeah, and owning it, he has rights to do what he can do consistent with the law.
Correct, and we're here to...
We're here to decide what the, what the limits of the law are in this particular instance.
It gets pretty plain.
I'm not, is, to continue, in an effort to continue to narrow it down and also buy us some time, I'm not overly concerned about vehicular congestion in this particular case. I'm not overly concerned with the overcrowding because the lot is bigger and there's less square, you know, as a percentage basis of that particular lot being used. I think Mr. Shinie made some very good points about comparing the concentrations of population that are allowed in the various zones and where this property would put this particular area. So I found that pretty, pretty persuasive. The walking to downtown, I don't know. And I see it. I don't personally find it particularly compelling, but it's there, I suppose.
And it's, it's near some of the recreational facilities too. There's the boat landing and stuff, the Sliding Rock area.
I guess the larger concern is, you know, we always, we like to think, and this is just an effort to keep talking and keep throwing ideas out so people can keep thinking, is we, we like to think in terms sometimes of, you know, the precedential effect. Every, every application is considered on its merits, but we also are trying to be mindful and consistent with the way, with the way that we approach things. So if we were to grant this, you know, do we feel comfortable that there are, we're able to distinguish it from other cases? If the, if the, if the difficulty is establishing this criteria of hardship in this particular case, the connection between what the claimed hardship is and the, and what's being asked for. We have, we denied an application in the past where there was a condition of slopes on the property in the back and what was being requested was a relief from the setback on the side. And we denied it because we didn't think there was a sufficient connection between the condition of the property and what was being asked for. They were just not related to each other. On the other hand, you know, we've been, we try to be flexible and reasonable in these things and do our jobs as best we can. Or is this, or is this area and this property just so different that we're not overly concerned about making a bad...
You're setting a precedent here.
Yeah.
You've got an ordinance that went in after these things were built in order to control the density.
Yep.
You, you make it, right outside. Okay, he's going to do it, then everybody else is going to be able to say, well, you've got a precedent here, so. The spirit of the ordinance isn't being fulfilled.
There's no land left though.
Well, yeah, you won't, you won't, yeah, unless you take something else down.
That may be a precedence, but there isn't too many neighborhoods quite like, I, I, there is no other neighborhoods quite like New Village in this town, so...
In, 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 probably New Hampshire, I mean, it was built as a mill housing.
Yeah, no, I'm sure there are, you know, the...
You won't find one in Stratton, you won't find, I mean, won't find one in the surrounding towns.
Yeah, right.
I find some in, probably not even Dover.
You know, I spent a lot of hours just researching all the, all the decisions that went to Supreme Court on cases in New Hampshire.
Yeah.
And nowhere could I find one similar to this.
Yeah.
This is the first one I, that I've come across. And I've spent a lot of time looking at them. Yeah. And I couldn't find anything exactly like this.
Now, one of the things we did, we did two things in addition to what we've already discussed, is we asked for an opinion from emergency services and we got no response. So I interpret that to be they have no position. Right? And then Diane, I asked Diane to do some research on other applications for variances in New Village and how that, whether there was anything relevant. Diane, why don't you tell us what you found?
I went through all of the properties in the R3 district and I only found one variance that was allowed for a density waiver, if you will. And it was in 1998, it was, um...
It was the LM M.
It was a single, uh, there's a house which is next door to the LM M, which at the time was a duplex at 51 Elm Street. And the applicant applied for a variance to allow a third two-bedroom unit and it involved the reconstruction of the building. And his comments at the time, this is Mr. Maston, indicated, "My intent is to upgrade the building to make the appearance more desirable for the butters and the general public. Given the present ordinances, these improvements are not possible. These renovations will allow off-street parking, which is not presently available. Therefore, because the lot is grandfathered, it's, it's a very small lot, less than a quarter of an acre of lot, land, has been a lot of record for a number of years, therefore I feel this permit should be approved." And I also did a little bit of research to find out when this was, this ordinance was adopted. And I looked at the 1984 ordinance and this was referred to not as an R3 district, but an R, a T R, a town residential zone. And that, the original zoning density for that area was six units per acre and that was changed in 1996 to what it is currently, which is two units per acre. So there was a period of fifteen or thirteen years or so where it did allow a higher density than what the case is today.
And then they changed it to do the exact opposite.
Right. And that was in 1996. And I have the maps to show you if you want.
And, and I go back to, you know, item 2.11, which says that the R3 district is a, is for transition and I'm just not seeing a lot of transition there, it's kind of...
Place to transition to, because it's all developed.
Right.
Correct. So, I mean, that, that, that also goes to the spirit of the ordinance, because it's specific to the R3, so, you know, that one is, I'm, I'm, I'm less concerned with that than I am trying to link the hardship of the fourplex to, connecting it to the uniqueness of the lot. And there's a lot of towns that are going through this. It's called having to deal with infill. I mean, the city of Portsmouth is going nuts because of infill. I mean, it's nothing, the magnitude of this, you know, it's, it's hotels and things like that, but that's what's happening is people are infilling lots rather than going out and, and striking out new areas. There, there's a...
I'm not sure how much developable land is left in Portsmouth. Certainly not downtown.
They're going up.
Yeah.
They're building up instead of...
Good example.
So...
It's only a matter of time before we have a skyscraper.
Where, in Newmarket?
We have a thirty-five foot height limitation, that's not going to happen.
With the variance.
Depends on the ladder on the fire truck.
We're up to seventy-five feet now, so... We, we, we can reach the top of Bryant Rock.
And if you copy the master plan?
It's called Quint, right?
Have a copy of the master plan there?
Do I? Yes, I do. Which would you, would you like to see?
Mr. Shinie talks about this smart, these smart growth guidelines.
Yeah, it's in our newly updated existing land use.
The master plan doesn't control over the specific provisions of the ordinance. This is one of my ongoing efforts to play for time.
But we can use it for some guidance as to direction, as to where it's going.
Yeah, it might help, might help, might give us some insight and help the...
I don't have that chapter here, I'll have to look it up to my office if you want me to grab it, I can't.
Can you get that?
Do you mind, if you don't mind, Diane?
No, I'd be happy to.
Take a peek at that?
Sure.
He refers in, Mr. Shinie refers in his applicant, in the supplemental materials for his application to the smart growth provisions of the master plan. I didn't have a chance to look at that. So I think it couldn't hurt to take a look at it. Now, in my mind, the master plan doesn't control over what the ordinance says, but it might help you, it might help us all think about things.
It gives us, it would give us a sense of direction.
Yes. Yep.
This one I've gone on.
It could.
The last paragraph.
Thank you. Oh, it's here, okay, well, that's... Right, this is Mr. Shinie's view of how his application fits within the guidelines, but I think we want to take a look at the guidelines. This makes great television, don't you think?
This makes great television?
Yeah.
I'm surprised that our audience isn't snoring.
It might be.
Watch parks or recreation?
Well, I'm sure the... I'm sure everybody appreciates that we're wrestling with a difficult issue because it's important. And some of these decisions are not easy.
One of the Cliff Notes coming out on it. Did he reference what section that was from?
No, no, don't say.
Okay.
Just a summary, it looks about how we have moved towards a smart growth policy.
Yeah, let me just take a, take a quick peek at it.
It's not very specific, unfortunately.
Right.
We're working on future land use, especially.
Okay. What this is saying is, um... I'm looking at the master plan, the smart growth, policy guide on the smart growth, which is in a box in the left-hand side of the page I'm looking at. It says, "Smart Growth," and I'll pass this around, "Smart Growth is not a single tool, but a set of planning principles that can be blended together with unique local and regional conditions to achieve a better development pattern." It's really talking about, I think, the downtown is what the focus of it is, but a unique sense of community and place, a vibrant downtown, mixed uses and housing choices through downtown revitalization, preservation of natural and cultural resources by adopting environmental overlay districts and architectural design standards for Route 108, local land conservation, well-defined wildlife corridors. This is kind of stated very generally. I'm just going to pull this out and pass it around.
How about this? "Smart Growth is about tailoring choices for individual settings, retrofitting communities to offer diverse choices in terms of housing types and prices."
Yeah.
Conservation of some of this...
It's very, very general, it's, yeah.
Very general.
Okay. So, I don't know if that added a lot to our thinking, but it was worth taking a look at.
Is that adopted or are we...
That was adopted last occasion.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll pass it back down here.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. You know you're in trouble when you're in this ABA meeting to pull out the master plan. That's when you know you're reaching, sorry.
Okay, it does have a section on redevelopment, growth management, and infill development.
Okay, infill development. And again, we're reading from the town master plan. It's on page four of the final draft of February 2013. "Infill development in its purest form is the redevelopment of land, or development of land, that has been bypassed, remains vacant and/or underutilized. Infill development can occur anywhere that a parcel of land is not sufficiently being used compared to the surrounding land use. It is frequently used in housing strategies to provide affordable housing or to fulfill the needs of various types of housing. Infill development plays a critical role in the conservation of land by the reuse of obsolete buildings within built-up areas for further construction. This adaptive reuse of a community can enhance the creation of village or municipal centers by connecting neighborhoods back together and providing an alternative to sprawl. Closely related to infill development is the concept of revitalization. While infill development focuses on the development of underutilized land or parcels, revitalization more often addresses the issues of building design and building use. Implementation of both infill development and revitalization can strengthen community function through the efficient use of existing infrastructure and buildings."
So, this is adopted, so how does, how can we use this to affect that decision?
I think it gives, I think you can use it as guidance, as something helpful.
It's not an ordinance.
It's not an ordinance, it's stated too generally and the terms of the ordinance control, but in terms of things where you have, where you're exercising judgment, right? It's helpful, it informs you and, you know, infill development is something that's...
What would typically...
An accepted mode of development under certain conditions.
What would typically happen is that after the master plan is adopted, the planning board would go back through and look at the zoning ordinances and subdivision regulations and make, recommend changes to that.
Tweak it.
Tweak it to make it consistent with the, the master plan.
But how does that affect us tonight?
Well, this gives us a direction as to where the, the town planners and, and the other, the other, our, our planning board would be looking towards going, that they might adopt.
And the recent adoption of the M2A zone last year by the town council, which was recommended by the planning board in a slightly different form, but that was in an attempt to encourage infill development in the areas adjacent to the current M2 zoning district, which is in your, the downtown. which is in your downtown. So we have gone through that process, but not the entire town, but for a portion of the town.
So, we could apply that to the spirit of ordinance, maybe?
No.
Well, is this proposal consistent with the spirit of the ordinance, and the master plan is the legal basis for the ordinance?
We just made things muddier.
Well, I think what it means is, and I'm not sure that the existing ordinance hasn't been touched since this was adopted. This is 2013, the master plan.
It hasn't made any zoning changes since 2013.
Right, and it's... It gets you a...
This was adopted in April, and the zoning change was adopted, I think, in August of 2013.
Part of what, part of what we struggle with, and part of what I struggle with, part of what I struggle with for sure is kind of the limits of our jurisdiction, the limits of our power. You know, it's not really our job to say, "This is a good idea." The way I see it, that's really a planning board function.
Correct.
But I think... And that's always a struggle.
I think here, that idea of infill goes to the, one of the, at least one of the aspects of hardship. We have a non-conforming lot that's underutilized, and we've got a proposal here that's reasonable to the overall neighborhood, but is out of compliance with the strict interpretation of the zoning ordinance.
And I think Elaine was saying, and therefore with the spirit of the ordinance.
With the spirit of the ordinance.
But you can't have something consistent with the spirit that's inconsistent with the letter, when the spirit as expressed, as I think what she would say, and she'll correct me if I'm wrong, is to freeze the density where it is. But the more I think about it, when you apply it that strictly in this case, you're really saying, when you apply the spirit of the ordinance that strictly in this instance, where there, you have an underutilized piece of property that can't be utilized in a way consistent with the character of the neighborhood, maybe that's not the right way to think about the spirit of the ordinance in this particular instance.
No, C says, "Open space design section does not permit an increase of residential density."
That's not, that doesn't apply to this, that applies to our open space residential development ordinance. This is a conventional development. But what they're referring to is our residential open space development provision, which allows...
Right.
A developer to cluster units on smaller lots than they normally would be allowed to do. So that's what that is referring to.
Right, what she's saying is 3.03C applies only to open space design subdivisions, which is not what this is. So Diana's saying, "Set that aside."
Yeah, it's just the first two items that we've...
It's the first two items.
As you pointed out.
As I mentioned, it says two units per acre.
Well, that's what the table is, that's right.
The other, okay, so let's take a look at 3.03A, okay? The control, the purpose of the density, and this is getting to the spirit thing, and I think I'm now evolving to an actual opinion. The spirit of the ordinance, or the, what the ordinance says is, okay, "Control residential density, important component, for many of the general purposes of the ordinance, including lessening vehicle congestion." I don't see vehicle congestion personally being...
No idea.
...an overriding factor in this particular instance. Preventing overcrowding of the land. I think the applicant has shown that it's going to be, this particular piece of land is going to be less densely crowded on a percentage basis than other existing properties in the area. It's the largest lot in the immediate area. I don't see an undue concentration of population for the reasons that he suggested in his analysis of the densities in the various areas. I don't see it as, even if there's two or three people per unit, and there's 10 or 12, I don't see that as putting this area on tilt and threatening a serious overcrowding of the area. I don't see a particular impact on public facilities, which are already in place, and Bob has pointed out, have already been upgraded, and I don't see another 10 or 12 people putting the public facilities. You know, if we had something from Rick that said, "You add one more person to this unit, and you're going to have to spend all kind," then I'd say, "Okay." But I don't see any, any threat of that happening. Bob, do you? Bob is shaking his head no, for the record.
That's correct, no.
I don't see a particular impact on utilities and services being detrimentally impacted. I don't see an impact on natural resources, it's not an area, there's no wetlands that we can see, and...
I think this is a key sentence, though, phrase in the last...
Yep.
Yeah.
Contributing to the community character and quality neighborhoods, I don't... It wouldn't make sense for, I think, for anyone to build a structure that would detract from the character or reduce the value of surrounding property, and people do it, I suppose, and folks have opinions about it. So we're back to density.
Well, I would argue that, so I would argue that it is, a four unit is actually contributing to the community...
Yeah.
...character, yes.
So maybe, maybe what the, maybe what the condition is, is the fact that you have this, this lot that is underutilized.
Correct.
That is underutilized and relative to the other lots in the area. It's totally unutilized, except for the, for the garage structure. When I say utilized, in terms of its development. It has, it has value as, as, I suppose has some value as open space, but Mr. Cheney owns it, and he has rights to do something with it that's consistent with...
If we approve it, all the commercial use goes away.
Right.
That's an asset.
You're right.
Is that helpful at all, to hear me babble on like that?
Yeah, it does, and, you know, I keep going back to 2.11, the statement of purpose, 2.11A, that says it serves as a transition between low-density residential and the more intensely developed areas around the, in and around the village area, so...
Is it, you're saying it's consistent with that, or not?
That would be consistent with, with the, the purpose of the R3 district is to act as an area where you can have varying densities as opposed to strictly low-density.
Right.
If we go to the...
You're looking at the table of uses?
Yeah, a table of uses, well, table of uses, it's the M3s, the R3...
The dimensions table, excuse me.
Multi-family residential.
PSN R.
He could even put a nursing home in there.
You can.
Oh, yeah, you can. How about that? You can have a bed and breakfast.
You can't do animal husbandry, though, so that's out. So no chickens.
And you can't have a marina.
Not enough water.
There goes your plan to put a marina on that, you know, a lot. Or a country club.
I'm, I'm thinking it's not contrary to the spirit of the ordinance. I think it's, it works within the, the framework of what's down there now.
Yeah.
The, my sticking point is still how to connect what, the uniqueness of that lot, which is the fact that it's, it's a non-conforming lot in the middle of a, how to connect that to a fourplex. And I think, I think we've got a, we've got a thread going there now with the fact that the town planners are looking at infill and have opened up the discussion as to what would be reasonable for appropriate uses for a lot like that. I think, given the fact that there are fourplexes and threeplexes right around it, makes it more palatable.
Sometimes you have infill because a property is neglected, for some reason. It's been, it's been disregarded, or it's not thought of. Whether or not that, I'm not sure that applies in this particular case, but that's where you get back to your power lines and your trees.
Yep, yep.
There's...
It could, it's...
Well, that's the PSNH issue, which also...
But I think, I think it's, it's, just to develop it as infill, somebody drops a single-family home in there, I don't think that would be as good for the neighborhood as a duplex or a triplex. I think it would...
Consistent with the ordinance, but not consistent with...
With the neighborhood, right there.
You think that's trouble, what happens?
With the, with the community character and quality neighborhood.
Community character and neighborhood.
Yeah, no.
Elaine, you've been quiet.
Yeah.
What are you think, what are you thinking at this point?
I just don't think a fourplex fits. I don't have trouble with a duplex or a triplex, but it's more dense with a fourplex.
Yeah.
Makes the ordinance useless.
It's hard to say that the fourplex doesn't meet the criteria when the density is a lot less than the surrounding properties that they set on.
Yeah.
You know, I would say if, if the unit he's building was, was making it greater, then I could say, "Well, we're not going that way." But he's proven that, the size of the buildings he's put them up is much less in density over the surrounding properties, by 29 percent.
But it says, "Two units per acre." Four units would, doesn't have enough land for four units.
Right, that's right, and the question is, is there something about it? Is there some unique condition that justifies a deviation from that?
The thing is, none of the lots down there have enough land to meet the ordinance.
But they were built before the ordinance.
Correct, I understand.
They're a hundred years old, most of them homes.
Yep. Well, I think our purpose in being here is to see, obviously, if the, every time we grant a variance, there is a certain level of tension. I mean, that's the purpose of a variance, is to, is to give relief from what the ordinance says.
That's why we're here.
Under very appropriate, under what we think are appropriate circumstances, right. So, so we're back, so we've come full circle. Is it, under these circumstances, an evisceration of the purpose of the ordinance to grant the variance in this case?
If we were going through and actually increasing the density in comparison to the surrounding lots, you know, I wouldn't...
If it was a six or an eight?
If a six or an eight, or...
Whatever.
I think that would be a problem. But the math has demonstrated that we're actually less dense than the surrounding units, there's going to be more open space associated with this lot than most of the other lots.
So I think, what I'm coming around to is, the unique condition of this property is its underutilization on account of its shape and location relative to other lots in the area.
That's a big part of it.
And having a fourplex, while it is inconsistent, and that's the purpose while we're here, with the, with the permitted residential density is, is consistent, is consistent with the character of the area.
It is.
It simply is, yeah.
I, I don't think we've got any problems on the one, criteria one, two, and four.
I think that's right.
Obviously, we only got the unnecessary hardship that we're really discussing, and if you want a motion, I'll make a motion.
Let me just, just hold it just a second.
Okay.
Are we, are we prepared to, to vote? I mean, we're going to vote?
You can vote.
Yeah, I can make a motion.
You may not all agree?
We don't have to vote on it until we all discuss it, if you want.
Yeah.
Huh?
Go ahead, Richie, please, thank you.
Okay. I'll make a motion on, on necessary hardship that no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provisions and the specific application of that provision, provision to the property. The zoning ordinance imposes some hardship on all property by setting lot size dimensions and allowable use, and as the R3 zone minimum lot size is now one-half acre, and the applicants lost less than two acres and less than 100-foot road frontage. The applicant has shown that to remove the large trees on the lot, one of which is dead, remove the existing pole that the electric and telephone line support, and to relocate them at no expense to the property owners that they service, and to develop this land with a single unit is unreasonable, as this lot is much larger than the abutting, existing individual lots of 2.28 acres in total with 20 units, with a density of 4,514.4 square feet per unit. In the applicants we crush for a fourplex unit on the reflecting area density of 29 percent less than the immediate neighborhood, the hardship been observed. In the second part of it, the proposal use is a reasonable one because the applicant has shown that due to the special conditions of the land for which the variance is sought is reasonable, as the proposed use of the land for a fourplex residential unit in the surrounding adjacent areas, that there are no single-family homes, and in a marked degree will not alter the existing character of the neighborhood.
That, that motion encompassed just the hardship criteria?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have a...
Okay.
You want to carry on?
Criteria one...
Something that addressed, yeah, go ahead.
The variance would not be contrary to public interest, as there will be no harm or adverse effect to the general, to the public, and by granting the variance, the public benefit will be well-served with the additional taxes that town's tax base. In criteria two, if the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed. It would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and would not threaten the public health, safety, or welfare of others. And four, if the variance were granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. As this property is unique in its setting, this lot is located more or less in the center of an area bounded by Grape Beach and Cedar Streets, and surrounded by residents of seven duplexes and two fourplexes, the surrounding properties would not be diminished. And as far as three goes, we've got to approve it before we can grant the variance anyway.
Okay.
Number three.
I would no for...
And I have a lot of conditions to go with it if we approve it.
Lay it all out there, please, let's get it all on the table now.
Okay. If we approve it, there'll be, with conditions, there shall be no financial obligation incurred on the abutting property owners associated with the moving and relocating of the power and telephone lines to their properties. The building inspector, in conjunction with the power and telephone companies, will have final approval of relocating the lines. of relocating the lines. See number one. An easement shall be given to the companies to maintain their lines on an as-needed basis. The Six Bay Building shall cease to exist as a commercial use. The Six Bay Building will be part of the condo ownership for their exclusive use only, and shall not be utilized by others. The existing entrance of Cedar Street shall be eliminated. The driveway shall remain private and under the ownership of the condo association. Would, that would be my conditions of approval.
What was the second to last one, Richie, I'm sorry?
The Cedar-
The existing entrance off Cedar Street shall be eliminated. That's still, that's still open.
Where is that?
That's private driveway, I think, right now.
There's a driveway there, but it comes right into the lot, there's no, there's no fencing or nothing there.
Okay, that's the-
You can drive, you can drive through on the right, on the right side, on the right side of the-
Okay, and the Grape Street access would be utilized?
Yes, yes.
I just wanted to-
Can I add a condition?
I'm sorry, I guess I missed that, okay.
Can I add a condition at some point?
Why don't you-
Oh, just have him-
Richie, are you done, Richie?
Yeah.
So that's your motion? Okay, Wayne, did you want to suggest a, Richie?
I would, I would just like you to add that we send this along, when we send this along to the
Yeah.
planning board, we remind them to work with the butters for proper screening.
Yeah, that would be a planning board issue, I know, right up front, yeah.
But just, just a recommendation, that's all.
Diane wouldn't let that get to them, anyway.
Okay. Does everybody have the motion in mind? Yes?
Well, I can approve it now, but if you-
Well, I'll entertain a second.
I second it.
Okay.
Okay, and I move to approve the application for variance referenced Section 303 of the New Market Zoning Ordinance to increase the residential density for a fourplex unit with less than the 100, than the required 100 feet of road frontage on Grape Street. The property is located in 1R Grape Street, Tax Map U2, Lot 206, the R3 zone, with the conditions as mentioned previously. And the condition that Mr. Rosa wanted to add to it.
Wayne, I assume you second that, as part of the-
I second it, yes.
Further discussion? I want to make sure it's clear on the record, as far as I'm concerned, the unique condition of this property that goes to the hardship is its underutilization and its configuration and location as an interior lot, pork chop, pork chop lot, relative to other similarly situ, other properties in the area, which are not similarly situated, and are dissimilar. And from my view, the spirit of the ordinance is, while it is, what makes it consistent with the, with the spirit of the ordinance in this particular and specific instance is the character of the uses in the immediate area, including several abutting properties, being fourplexes, and every other use in this particular block being a duplex. So, I think it's a very unique set of circumstances, a very unique property, and a unique area, certainly in New Market, possibly in the seacoast, as well. So, I want to make those suggestions clear on the record, because I think those are the issues that would be focused on, if this came to the next step. So-
The only other place I found something that was somewhat similar was that the building they want to put was going to impact the setbacks, so we got these, it got thrown out.
Right.
And like I say, I never could find one the same as this, in the, in the-
Okay.
In the state IRSAs, or even decisions from the Superior Court.
Any further comment, discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Bob was in the aye, yes, and all those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, and put that down as four to one. The variance is granted, and you will do the necessary-
We should let, I mean, they've still got the planning board process to go through to address specific concerns with the law.
Okay, any further new or old business to come before the ZBA? Entertaining motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I want to thank everybody for working really hard on this very difficult application, and the very high-level discussion that I think we've had.
First one we've had in a long time.
Very difficult, very difficult, so thank you, everybody, for doing a great job on this. Appreciate it.
That was a good discussion.